...of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right. Non-agenda items from the sidelines. Does anybody have anything that they filled out here that I might have missed that's non-agenda? Comments from city administration? Bark?
I'll take on some of the...
Okay. Later on in the... Tammy, are you here?
For...
Yes.
For the chamber?
Oh, for the chamber, um, yes. We're still looking for vendors for the festival. The festival's going to be placed August fifth through the eighth. We have the market, and we're still looking for vendors. And we are still looking for volunteers to help us with organizing some of the events, Kids' Day, the kickoff, the parade, things like that. So if anybody does want to volunteer, we are looking for volunteers and just come and see me, and I'll point you in the right direction.
Okay. Does he have any other meetings besides during the day? Do you have any evening meetings?
No, not before a festival. The festival meeting is always the second Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM at Donut Girls.
6:00 PM?
6:00 PM. And then the chamber meeting's on the second Wednesday of the month at the Doghouse Tavern at 8:00 AM.
Tammy?
Yes.
Are we having any parade this year?
Yes, we are.
So I need to apply for a permit for that. Okay. All right. And that's starting at, uh...
6:00 PM.
Six or 6:30?
6:30.
The parade starts at 6:30?
The parade starts at 6:30. Line up at 5:30.
And so does that 6:30?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Non-agenda?
Non-agenda. According to this, let's make sure that things are in order if I'm not lying. Unfinished business, you got set for a planning commission recommendation to city council on zoning for marijuana, outdoor grow. Last meeting of planning commission, there was overwhelming support from the planning commission, also include the indoor grow as just part of this meeting today. It was all grow.
We're gonna get to that.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much.
Does anybody have any amendments for the agenda?
I'd like to make one change. This is outdoor grow, but they add indoor grow as well. Unfinished business.
It's not gonna be...
No further changes.
Eating a micro bowl and not there.
What was that addition to the agenda? I didn't hear that.
Indoor, oh, add discussion on the outdoor grow.
No, no.
I'm sorry, indoor, I'm sorry. Indoor. Discussion on indoor. The agenda only says outdoor. I wanna add indoor.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Thank you.
Okay, Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
All right. Next, administration memo number one, blocking amendments. Did I get a motion to...
I made a motion to adopt administrative memo number one of 2122.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
All right. Next up, Sage Quinary transferring the location of the manufacturing license to 80890 Main Street. So that's...
Yeah, that's what was last known as a tack shop for M-19 and Boardman. And we're going to ship the manufacturing over there because it's a bigger building. But we will not sell out of that shop. All the sales will be out of the normal Sage Quinary. And we're applying for the permit to move that manufacturer.
Does that go through the state?
Yes.
Did I get a motion to allow them to transfer the location of the manufacturing license to 80890? Support.
Who made the motion?
All right. Ready. Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
All right. Next, administration memo number one, blocking amendments. Did I get a motion to...
I made a motion to adopt administrative memo number one of 2122.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
All right. Next up for our water and sewer, agreement for NTEC for water storage tank project. Bark, this is pretty much a contract agreement of this is mostly inspection and engineering?
Yes. This agreement here would be a fact for the tank for... To drop the paperwork and put off the... Before we see the project of painting the wet interior. That has not been done since 32, 33 years.
Right.
I'll work it down across in 30 to 45 days.
What do you do in the meantime? Help by demand?
Well, we have what they call DFEs now. The last time we had it...
VFE for everybody is a variable frequency drive. It controls the rate at which the pumps run.
And the last time we went to fire to use DFEs, we had to use the port tank, nine dollars. We don't know what it was, a thousand dollars. But we're gonna start a DFE even with more pressure than valves. Pretty much that is the minimum pump.
So you have a pump running at low speed, and then when its demand increases, the DFE a lot of the...
Yeah, we've got, we have the pressure relief valves at seven, six, eight, twelve pounds. We have a baller at six pounds. So it won't be any... So it may be fixed.
Okay.
Yeah, I tried it for a lot, after notified. And five river will draw over after no hydrogen.
So the third department that will not be able to tap the hydrogen because they won't have the ability to give that kind of pressure to...
They don't have the capability.
Right. And you say how long?
Thirty to forty-five days.
Okay. Let's hope we don't have any big emergencies in town.
Yeah. I know it used to be drinking after...
They're just gonna be drinking after acting off of the Bell River or what they can have a tanker truck full ready to go.
Yeah. So we're hoping probably not to start this prime circle like old.
What about the possibility of a tanker truck in town for emergencies, just in case?
For fire? It's empty out in five minutes.
Probably not much.
We have a tanker. I haven't had a tanker, Richmond hasn't had a tanker, or maybe it has a tanker.
No, talking about a big water tanker, big, not a fire tanker, but a water tanker.
The estimated cost of a tank, of a tank is estimated around fifty-six dollars.
That's the total expenses?
That's just an estimate.
You're asking out?
That's to be bid.
Sorry. The power itself is estimating for forty-one thousand dollars. Being at practically fifteen thousand, five hundred fifty dollars in... Updating. Total fifty-six thousand, five hundred thirty.
And this is, this is just for NTEC at this point in time for...
Yes, for 12, 960, correct.
Correct.
Now, there's other costs to prepare, like, for example, if we were to get a tanker, that's taking work for ten, twelve thousand dollars.
Are they painting the outside too?
So we're trying to save your money on that. What's that?
Painting the outside also?
No, just the wet interior. I think the last time that was quoted, there was an epoxy coating that was done in 1988.
The outside was just done?
Two thousand and eight.
A motion?
Please.
Make a motion that we coordinate the...
Bark? Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Sofa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Murder?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to unfinished business. Planning commission recommendation to city council on the zoning for marijuana outdoor grow. We're gonna start with that. Recommendation came from the planning commission to not allow for a change in the zoning to allow for an outdoor grow in our light industrial area.
Comments?
Sure.
Speak up.
All right. I did, at the suggestion of Jason, I did talk to the lawyer this afternoon, and there's two, there's two issues, both indoor and outdoor. The outdoor, we can make a motion not to allow that or to allow either way. But the indoor is already in the ordinance, so the only way that that can be taken out is we amend the ordinance. So what we have to do then is amend that council, introduce it, adopt it, and publish it to the community. I have a motion, Adam, by the way, if we get that, that kind of explains, we can't, in other words, we can't strictly not allow the indoor because of the ordinance. We have to do that or amend.
Right. And currently, outdoor grow is not, no, I'm saying currently, outdoor grow is not allowed in our ordinance. And again, the recommendation comes from planning to not change our zoning. So, and then, and again, what Larry was saying there is, he would look at making amendment to change our zoning, which is already in place, that allows for an indoor grow operation. So we would have to turn around and we would have to amend our zoning for that part. Does everybody...
No, not zoning.
Not zoning? No, our ordinance, I'm sorry, our ordinance, our ordinance, on the marijuana grow.
So that's how we...
Okay. At this point in time, I'm gonna take a minute, a lot of minutes, I think, based on what I see here, and open up for comments. And I'm gonna ask everybody, when somebody is speaking, no interruptions, or I'm gonna ask you to leave. I am gonna allow you five minutes to speak, not ten, not seven, five minutes. I want this kept in order. I don't want anybody barking out stuff. You allow somebody to speak, and again, if you don't, you're gonna be asked to leave, okay? So we're gonna start off with Mark Lamerson from Central Street.
I'm right here.
Hi, Mark.
How you doing? I'm trying to keep this less animated than last time. Pretty simple. We had a, had a professional marijuana consultant in the house last week. I know a couple of you guys weren't here. He made a pretty solid case on behalf of us. He said that, you know, us as a city, we couldn't afford him as a consultant. And I honestly believe on the testimony that he gave last week, the marijuana industry won't be able to afford him for very long either. According to his testimony, we all know the impacts of outdoor grow facilities and how it negatively impact our community here. His statement, and I quote, was that an indoor grow facility would be ten times worse than the outdoor grow facility. And that's why he made the recommendation to you as a council to allow the, to move forward with an outdoor grow. So not only am I in support, my household in support of retracting any statements about allowing an outdoor grow facility here, we're also in support of what Mr. Wilson said about introducing an amendment to the ordinance to ban any indoor grow facility here as well due to just that man's statement of it being ten times more impactful than an outdoor grow. And then just a couple of comments that we picked up on from the last time. Water usage during the summer months would increase by 50% per the statements that heard them say five gallons per plant, or about 65,000 gallons a month right now, right, or then?
Could I, could I make a...
Sure.
That if there's an outdoor grow, they wouldn't use the city water because it's coordinated and coordinated.
Okay.
They're not, under ordinance, allowing to tap the well. They would have to have a truck there.
Okay.
Just point of information.
Great.
By the way, we're on an average, should be on the average of seventy thousand.
Seventy thousand, okay. All right. And I'll, per day?
Per day.
Per day, right. An outdoor grow facility would have been at thirty-five. There are runoff issues brought up, the smell issue, crime issue brought up by the sheriff and prosecutor. So with all that being said, I mean, it's pretty cut and dry when a consultant comes in and says it's gonna be ten times worse. Just get rid of them both. We thank you.
Thanks, buddy. Tammy, you're up.
I really just told it out just in the end that things weren't brought up. I think everybody else who's gonna speak is gonna reiterate everything that we talked about last week at the meeting, so I'll just move along.
I think it's Neil Bryan?
Brian. Hello, everyone. I'm Neil Bryan. I live in Riley Township off Spinson Road. My property is, backs up to where the nature sanctuary is in Jensen's Auto, and right across the street is where proposed land is gonna be used for. It's approved. I moved out here with my wife and four kids roughly four and a half years ago from the suburbs, and we absolutely love it out here. We even, how much people, we would like it. I'm absolutely opposed to this. Main reason for us is any kind of odor. Somebody brought some good points up last meeting about the wind barriers or whatever types of plants. Wind direction, I think the wind direction was northeast. Well, my property is directly northeast and uphill from where the coal sites is. I'm not okay with spending my summer nights, whether it's four weeks, six weeks, smelling this odor while my kids are out outside playing while I'm trying to go bonfire. That's what was so attractive for me to come out here. I'll tell you one thing, the benefits I heard as far as whether it's fifteen thousand dollars or whatever you might think, my home value, you know, speaking for myself, looking out here, if I knew or there was a chance of us smelling that, we would have never moved here. And so for the fifteen thousand, and I'll tell you right now, I think it's gonna directly affect home values here, so attracting this people moving out here. And, you know, if it's between Memphis and one of those surrounding areas, they're not gonna pick Memphis. You don't have a lot to, you don't have to do much right now to make it attractive to live out here. I don't know about the past, maybe there was, people were struggling, they were ready to move out here. My friends and family that come visiting want to live here, they just can't find a house right now. Okay? So people are gonna go out here, lumber's coming down, they're gonna bring money here, they're gonna invest in the community. I opened up a business in Richmond when I transferred my family. If you're doing this to the town, it's gonna be far less attractive, and I'm entirely against the outdoor grow for those reasons.
Thank you. Bob Servick?
Hi, everyone. Bob Servick, Riley Township Gilbert Road. Last meeting, I heard a gentleman from St. Clair's Doors talk about the benefits of an outdoor grow and how horrible an indoor grow would be. And if we don't approve the outdoor grow, it seems like the indoor grow is inevitable. So I work for the power company, and I talked to some service planners and some engineering, and it's literally impossible unless you have millions of dollars to upgrade the electrical system to support an indoor grow in this area. There's a reason all the state licensed commercial grows in our area, across from Gibraltar Trade Center, running Executive Drive, Production Drive, they have substations there to support the industry. It's not coming here. Don't let that be a threat to think, we're gonna get, if we don't approve this outdoor grow, we're gonna get some monstrosity of an indoor grow. They can get the permit for the building, they can build the building, they'll never get the power for it. It doesn't make sense.
Thank you. Andrew C. White?
Under Sheriff Jim Spataford? Yes. Thank you. Sheriff King couldn't make it tonight, he had another engagement, but he sent me as a, I guess, a substitute to come and speak with everyone. I was not privy to the information at the last meeting, but knowing this is about marijuana grows, I have a lot of experience in that. I spent 14 years under a drug task force. I've been in thousands of marijuana grows. I've seen the power grids, I've seen how they're watering them. And yes, will it tax some of your infrastructure? Absolutely. Are the indoor grows dangerous? Absolutely. We're talking a little more about outdoor grows, I think is what was proposed. I heard about this wind study. I can't even believe that. You can smell marijuana from extreme on a distance. We get calls all the time about it. And when our guys show up, they can smell it houses away. It's not 10 foot, it's not 15 foot. Sometimes when the wind's blowing hard, it's 50, 100 feet, you can smell it. Make no mistake, these large grows are not about anything but money. They're about cash. And it's not for the people of the community, it's for themselves. Because these marijuana grows are selling this marijuana for 20, $25 a gram approximately, right? And they use the word medicine. Medicine, 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 medicine. I keep hearing the word over and over and over again. Well, let's, let's talk about that. If I need marijuana as medicine, and some people do, I'm not saying I'm against marijuana, I'm not. What I am against is the intent behind it. So at $25 a gram, you're gonna smoke what, maybe three grams a day if you need it, if you actually need it? So that's what, $75 a day? So how much is that a month? Over $2,000? That's a pretty expensive medicine, I would think. You guys will not have the money to fight these people if they show up. Look at the city of Port Huron. They thought they had a vetted way to handle licenses, they did the research, and what happened? The first round of licenses they handed out, everybody else didn't get one, what did they do? They sued them. And they're gonna keep suing them. And they're gonna keep suing them. And how do I know that? Because the last marijuana case, I was involved in a very large grow, is still in litigation to this day, and it was eight years ago. I don't even think the county could afford, after a period of time, to fight it. Thank goodness our prosecutor's office has multiple attorneys that keep taking up this case and keeps revisiting it and revisiting it and revisiting it. That's how they stay. Because they can. They have the money to fight it. There's no, it's no big deal to them. Because not only do they have this grow, they have grows all over, all over this place. So the question is, why here? Why do they come here? Well, they come here because you're a smaller town. They think it's easier to go in front of your board. That's what it's all about. Regardless of what decision is made, though, I will say that Sheriff King is committed to this community, and we will work hand in hand with the citizens, the board, whatever we can do to help with this. We're not going anywhere, and we're committed to whatever happens here, we're here to say.
Susan Hankins?
Susan Hankins, from the Fret Row. I just wanted to, I've been involved with this for the last couple of months, and I want to start off by saying thank you to the planning commission for their time, for listening to the community. I'm well aware that community service is a thankless job, and I just want to tell you thank you for your time and your effort and everything you put in to the last meeting, to hearing everybody's concerns. To the city council tonight, I want to say that we've heard from prominent members of our community, the sheriff, the undersheriff, our prosecutor, all telling us, no, not here. This is a bad idea for your town, and I don't know who we would be to shrug our shoulders to that and say, we're not going to listen to your recommendation. They've dedicated their life as well to community service, to this county, and I feel like we owe it to them, along with all of our citizens here in Memphis, to tell them, no, not here either. Everybody else has said, no, I don't want to hear, my family doesn't want to hear. Any person at the last meeting that lived in this area didn't want to hear, and I'm very hopeful and grateful to you all for listening to that and saying no to me to that. Also, along with the outdoor grow, we say no to the indoor, and I beg you to amend that ordinance to disallow the indoor grow as well. Thank you.
Mr. Lott?
Yeah. I own a business over on Bell River Road. We're in the process of trying to expand that business. I've talked to the council about some of the expansion plans that we're, we're looking at. What I can tell you about indoor versus outdoor grows is either, either one of them are extremely, they smell awful. I mentioned last time at the last meeting about the smell from the grow right around the corner from where we're at at our cottage. I can tell you that my wife gets woken up in the middle of the night from the smell of it, and she can't go back to bed. It is atrocious. First time she doesn't even want to go down there. I can tell you, once they're in, you're not gonna get them back out. You're not gonna fight them in any way, shape, or form, because they will have 10 times the money that you have to do it. You're gonna watch property values go down. I built my business and other businesses to have the value of the property, be able to retire eventually. Well, all you're gonna do is drive those property values down. The theft that you're gonna see, I seen, I seen, I seen it happen at our, right around from our corner, where I mentioned the fact that they had, had to heliport somebody out in our backyard because somebody got their face beat in with a baseball bat trying to get into this facility. You don't want this type of stuff. This stuff, people are gonna be invited to go right across my property to get into this facility.
from where we're at at our cottage. I can tell you that my wife gets woken up in the middle of the night from the smell of it, and she can't go back to bed. It is atrocious. First time she doesn't even want to go down there. I can tell you, once they're in, you're not gonna get them back out, you're not gonna fight them in any way, shape, or form, because they will have 10 times the money that you have to do it. You're gonna watch property values go down. I built my business and other businesses to have the value of the property, be able to retire eventually. Well, all you're gonna do is drive those property values down. The theft that you're gonna see. I seen, I seen, I seen it happen at our, right around from our corner, where I mentioned the fact that they had, had to heliport somebody out in our backyard, because somebody got their face beat in with a baseball bat trying to get into this facility. You don't want this type of stuff. This stuff, people are gonna be invited to go right across my property to get into this facility. I don't need that in there. If I'm gonna grow my facility here, having something like this is gonna deter me from doing that. I might as well go find another piece of property and do it someplace else. I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to invest two to three million dollars into a building in order to do the things that I want to do, and I can't afford to have a business that is gonna run people away. And if I invest that kind of money, and it runs my business away and it costs me money, there's gonna be other legal issues besides them. It's gonna, if it costs me, I'm gonna have to do something about it. Do we really want to be the people that sold out Memphis? Do we really want to do the things that, that other communities are telling you, don't do, don't touch, don't touch it with a 10-foot pole? You've got a one-square-mile community here, and you put an indoor or an outdoor grow in that, that community, you're gonna have all kinds of problems. And you, no way you could possibly, you could possibly fight them. The environmental impact, whether you do it or not, employment issues, me bringing people in. Today, we were out there, the hot humidity, we were cutting the grass. And because of the humidity alone, inside of our building smelled like we were cutting the grass inside the building. I can't imagine having a grow around that corner and the smell that it's gonna be, what it's gonna be like inside that building. And people aren't gonna want to work for us. And if I can't get people to work for us, there is no sense in me expanding my business in this area, none whatsoever. I need people, and it's hard enough to get people now. The safety of the people around here is imperative. And the problem is, we can't, we cannot continue to maintain the safety of our, of the people around here if we're putting something like this in place, because it will get completely out of, out of control. Tell you what, if you have an indoor grow, or an outdoor grow, mostly indoor grows, they're gonna be working late hours, and that's gonna generate all kinds of smell in the middle of the night. It's gonna be waking people up. You know, like I said before, the prosecuting attorney and the sheriff is here, you know, and the electrical problems you're talking about. We have electrical problems in this town. Whenever there's a lightning storm, wherever there's a, the power goes out in Memphis. Always. You know how many times I've brought generators down to my facility just to keep it running? Because Memphis grid is that poor? Now, let's take and add this on to it. And when we have a power, when we have a power problem, guess what? It's gonna be that much harder to get it back up, because it's gonna have to be that much more robust. We cannot, as a community, afford to do the things that you, that you guys are looking to possibly do. If you guys want to sell this town out, then you do that. But that's what you're doing, you'll prove it. People on this board prove it. You are selling out this town, and remember that.
Thank you, everybody. Here I am, Ronald Obama Marito. I live on Borden Road. According to the city clerk, the last meeting we had was the largest, I think that, if not the largest amongst the largest that was ever on record. I, I think many of the points that I would like to recount have already been mentioned, but I'd like to just give a summary of a two-hour discussion in a matter of a couple of minutes. First, we heard from Sue Haskins, who provided a handout, which would be kind of interesting to see. We never saw the details of that, but it'd be nice to have the backup. Next, we heard from the St. Clair County prosecuting attorney. He took time out of his schedule, he has young children, and yet he spent time here, probably two, two and a half hours, to come to this meeting to deliver his message. His message was that how virtually every other nearby municipality has voted against growing operations. We also learned that those communities that have initiated those ordinances are facing lawsuits. Look at Port Huron. We learned that there are increased compliance issues. We learned that because so much money is in that business, that we, as a small city, would have a difficulty defending ourselves against these lawsuits, because they've got a lot more money, and they'll keep on coming. I think someone just mentioned that. And they hate your lawsuit.
Thank you.
They have much deeper pockets than we do. Then we heard from the St. Clair County sheriff, how crime is attracted to these grow facilities, criminals from outside the area. He recounted robberies, he told the story, shootings, he told the story, thefts, vandalism, and yes, kidnapping. Those were brought to grow facilities in his jurisdiction. These are not your sake, those are actual events. We have him on record. Then we heard from Mr. Donato, who suggested again that the anticipation of possible building in the city would be curtailed by the possibility of having his property values, not able to hire employees, and we just heard from him. Think about that. And here's a businessman who has one of the larger facilities, one of the larger organizations within our, companies within our city, and he's saying, wait a minute, I might move. Then we talked about water. Now, I understand that the water's not being drawn from the municipal facility. I understand that because of the fluoride and chlorine. However, bear in mind that approximately 22% of the total usage of the entire city would be used for a growing operation that operates 200 days a year. One-fifth of the, of the whole amount of water that we use. That comes from an aquifer. It comes from an artesian well, if I'm correct. And so somewhere that water has to come from. And if we put this into perspective, six acres divided by 640 acres, which is the size of a one-square-mile area, is just under 1% of the land area. And they're gonna use 22% of the water that the entire city uses. We have no idea who the operator is. Does anyone know? We have no idea what license they're applying under. Apparently, the council didn't, or the commission didn't understand it, or didn't know. We've seen no site plans, we've seen no pro forma, we've seen no online of operations. The owner, operator, whoever, was not even in attendance. Then we heard from the consultant, and he was from St. Clair Shore, so a local, of course. Still in the county, I guess, hyperhead, of course. He spent all his time delineating the difference between an outdoor grow and an indoor grow, and was really pointing out how bad an indoor grow was, and yet that wasn't before the, that wasn't before the commission. So does he even pay attention to what he's talking about? And that wasn't the point, but it certainly raised some interesting additional points here. And thank you for bringing that up, that wasn't, I think that was succinct. So what kind of consultant is he? Who will pay for the defense of these lawsuits? Who will pay for the additional police? Who will pay for the drop in my property values, and Mr. Donato's property values, and yours, and yours, and mine? Yeah, you know, it's us. The property owners will have to pay to support this operation. And let's talk a little bit about money. I understand that, according to the attorney I quoted last week, they can go between one and five pounds per year for plant. We use two pounds as a number, 6,000 plants. The average price, retail price of an ounce is $220. Our undersheriff just said it was about 700 if you do the math. $25 a gram times 28 is about 700. But I'm simply working off of $220, which is a, one-third less, or 70% less. The retail value of that, based on that, is $40 million. $40 million! A more appropriate fee might, much like a casino, would be a 5% royalty, which would be $2 million. 5%, $2 million as a royalty to the city. That may give us enough money to defend it and to sustain our property values. I don't know, I don't think so. I mean, I just say, but $15,000? Do they believe we've just fallen off the turnip truck? Apparently so. Jason seems in favor of the operation. In fact, I haven't heard, or I've heard, pardon me, correct me if I'm wrong, but he's offering his service for free. My question to everyone would be, why? Why would a real estate, were you gonna-
I've not offered anything for you, I have no idea what you're talking about.
Mr. Bob Marito, you have 30 seconds to wrap it up, please.
The endless hours of testimony that we're recommending against an outdoor grow. The meeting lasted almost two hours. It was all involved in testimony. I'm trying to give a summary of this in five minutes, and I will say that we are strongly opposed to this operation. In a one-square-mile area, there are tens of thousands of acres nearby. How can the vote go any other way than against this operation?
I got one. I don't know, what services were you talking about?
Oh, I was, I, I heard, pardon me, about school and that. I heard that you were going to represent the property owner and no charge-
No, absolutely not.
Okay, fine, no problem. It was just a, it was just a-
I didn't know the property owner.
You don't know-
No, I have absolutely no idea who the property owner is. I think he turned in an application today, though.
I'll start my own block here. I want to also give my summary, my impressions over this process. I am on a planning commission, and I want to give it into perspective briefly. First, as a citizen, I've lived in this community since 2001. I've had three boys graduate from this high school. Prior to moving here, I lived in the upper peninsula of Michigan for almost 20 years. This place was the closest thing that I could find that suited our lifestyle and the community spirit that we look for. Now, I got a libertarian streak a mile wide, and I'm not against anybody smoking weed. I don't think you ought to be thrown in jail. I grew up in the late 60s and 70s, and there was abuses of that all over. The cat is out of the bag, the cannon's in the tent with that. And we had, not too long ago, through the planning commission, a recommendation to open a retail facility for marijuana products, a medical and a recreational, which was approved. There was one license available. And to the officer's point, and also to the sheriff's point, which we got a whiff of right away, we had a local man that applied for that license, owns a smokehouse in the community, is gonna do it low-key, bought, he invested in that property a month, all these things sounded good to me, and I voted in favor, and I'm gonna be quite upfront about that.
I was.
We had another applicant who immediately filed FOIA, wanted our minutes from that meeting. No further legal action has come from that, but that's just a whip of it, that's for the retail place. All right? As a citizen, again, I'm gonna be right up front. I'm God, family, I'm country, in that order. And I heard a lot of people here adamantly speaking about family, and I, that's the second one on my triad right there, is my family. And when I hear about people who are looking to buy places, invest in this community, and will, people are already here, say they leave, that is something we cannot ignore. Now, right now, I, I chair the planning commission, I'm just one vote on there. But I've listened to this very in-depth, and my mind was open when we came into it. In fact, the meeting before the last one we had, I had not made up my mind. And there was not really a resolution to it, to the point that I would not pass. I said that we needed to table it and give more time. There was people from the community wanted to research it more. That took place. And praise God, man, that's democracy working. That's people. It's messy, we're vocal, we had a lot of high passions, but that's the way that it goes, and I'm very, very pleased to see that. So in summary, we do, many of the points have been made here tonight. We got a square mile. Mr. Bob Marito made this point. We got thousands and thousands of acres surrounding this community. Why do they want to be within the one-square-mile city limit? I say they want our services. Water? What if they chose to drill, to drill a well? Maybe they want to treat that water, maybe they'll get the chlorine out, it's gotta come from somewhere. I would not rule that out. $15,000 for a license? Once they're in, we are talking multiple millions of dollars. They would swallow us. When I first moved in here, I looked around, look at that, man, people walking around town. Ice cream stand on the, on the street there. Old school house, that's where I moved first. I live right across the soccer field, I got two acres over there. We've got a gem. We have 15 acres of green space right here, the Lions Field. We've had blues festivals here, we've had outdoor fairs here, we can still continue to do that. A few months ago, we approved a plan to build 15 houses across from my street, up along the Bell River. You know, I realize it's not a perfect world, you can't, and I don't like the concept of funding virtue on vice. It's there, yes. The old timers will call it syntax. Liquor, alcohol, tobacco. We're gonna get money from the marijuana dispenser, all right? That's, that's just the reality of life in the real world. However, an outdoor grow is gonna be detrimental. You are gonna smell it. I think everybody's made that point, you're gonna, anybody living in the real world knows it. And I would strongly recommend the council amend that ordinance, get rid of the growing operation, indoor, outdoor, period, and don't allow it in this city. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, everybody. I don't know how much more to say than what has been said. We have, about every point has been made, and I think, let me get this right where it's at. You know, I live, Jason Poppy right there, my kids go to school here. And it infuriates me that it would even be considered to be okay to put, park this next to my home, park this next to my kids to deal with it, and I think it ain't, it's just all about me. I got my good neighbor Guy, I got my other neighbor, I got the other houses on the other side of that, that, of that field too, and that's just a very local side. I think about the people, maybe trying to hop the river, cut through my property, maybe to take some, steal some, you know, there's gold up in the hills, right? I mean, there's money in there, so people want to get in there, or my kids may come across. I am so furious that you guys would even consider it. I mean, I understand that your intentions may be good for some donations, money, but you guys, I really hope you understand what jeopardy, what, what you would be putting us in, not just our profit values, our safety, for somebody else's financial benefit is absolutely ludicrous. I mean, in my opinion, it would have been smart, I mean, and probably everyone in this room would have been just, like every other town around us, just opt out like you had a dang chance to do that. And I hope you can understand that if, if I am put in this position, you know, this ain't our last meeting, you know, I hope you guys can see through from hearing everything that everybody has spoke, from sheriffs to our neighbors, to the fact-finding network that was done. But I hope you guys really do the absolute right thing. You guys really should be opting out of this whole industry altogether, is what you should have been doing. Because you're opening up yourselves to lawsuits. I don't care what has been pre-approved. I mean, you guys already, you had an ordinance and you opted out, and then for some reason you decided to opt in in this one, and you opted in this one for a reason. Why? And an issue that's so dang important, I mean, you think really the voice and putting a little, you should have got the message in the voice, you should have been paying attention, I mean, buy a damn stamp. I mean, let the whole community know, because if you did, you wouldn't have a dispensary. You wouldn't have, we wouldn't be having this discussion. That part came out before. I had days to get organized and make some phone calls and talk about what time I got the letter. The next one, I'm gonna have a lot more time, and we all gonna have a lot more time. None of us want it. And I'm just saying, I'm, I just can't believe we're even here talking about it anymore. I mean, you guys heard what everybody had to say about it, and please reconsider. Any consideration, not just now, in the future, change your ordinance, please. And all of it, really, out, completely out of this industry. We don't need this town, right? We don't. Nobody else is doing it for all the same reasons that we offer. You guys should really consider the same. $15,000 and some donations is definitely not, it's gonna cost just me alone more than that, and several of us, just as individuals. Sacrifices, it means that, not just one guy, just one gets, it just happened to one guy's negatively, negatively impacted. I don't care if it's one, I don't care if it's just God, I don't care if it's just one person. In this town, if he's negatively impacted from this, it should be considered. We are a community, we should be taking care of each other, we should be looking after all of us, every single one of us. Not just the five people over here that might, it's okay, it's just them. Don't matter if they're here or not here. Somebody look after them. They live here, they're part of our community. Please do the right thing. Thank you.
You know, there's not much to say about all this, but I, when all this first started, one of the council's members said to me that I mentioned about the kids driving around town, or riding their bikes, walking down there. All the dispensaries, we won't hurt it. What about all the businesses gonna have, the cars pouring out there, it's gonna affect all the kids here? One of them, they could get hit. Another one, they could be smoking the dope in the parking lot. Maybe not, because it's supposed to be secure. Let's go down to the Memphis Park, where I do see people, the concerts are, the concerts are there. People are out there with the kids, they're down there, they buy it there, they go down to the park and they smoke it. Then you got your outside grow, where you're sitting there, you got your park right down there. All the marijuana's going down there. What do you get? You get the smell during the summer. I've got three dispensaries by my shop. It smells, it stinks. I had the guys that owned the dispensary stay the guy out back just a week ago and beat the shit out of another guy, because they were against this, and they're, not much to say, but think about what you're doing to this town. You're gonna lose everybody. People are already setting a fighting over each other. Out of town, in town, I want it, I want it. It's not good for one square mile. So that's, that's all I'm gonna say. Think about your families.
Jeff Christie?
When I left this last meeting, I went all night long. All the reasons we're not supposed to be here, well, we don't want this outdoor grow. So I started doing doubles that. Nobody knows why they're here. Okay, why do they want this one? I thought about it. I'll tell you, there's a few things that makes do this. You want the power, you need water, you need permits. It's pretty much all you do, the manhunt, they got me. So power, water permits, power. The general manager says they can't do it because of the grid, right?
Correct.
What if I said I wanted a 200-amp service? You'd give me 200? 200-amp service is wrong all the way, right? I get a 60-kilowatt diesel generator, sit there and run here in my car, the whole rest of the thing is 60-kilowatt. So the power's not a problem, this guy got $40 million, I just told you how they're gonna do it. I'm not here to tell you I want this, I'm telling you, we have some, we have some chinks in our armor. If you think they're not gonna get water, what's running along with this property, the Bell River? They don't want the water out of the water tanks, it's chlorinated. They want non-chlorinated water. What's the best way to get non-chlorinated water? Out of a fresh, flowing river. Bell River is always flowing. So there's the water. So you wanna know why they want this property? They wanna know why? It's the water. Because they can put power anywhere. He'll give you 200 kilowatt, he'll give you 200-amp service anywhere, and they put a 60-kilowatt generator anywhere. They want the water. So I just, I just bugged both of the reasons why you don't know why they're coming. I just told you why they're coming. They got that water. Permits, that's the one thing we got by the balls. And it's up to you to tell them no. If you don't tell them no, they're gonna come here. You're gonna give them all these reasons why, and you don't think it's gonna happen. And I'll tell you right now, if I was going against you, I'd have you by the balls. If you gave me the permit, I could start one of these in my backyard today, because I just told you how I'm gonna do it. And that's what you do. You figure out where, how it's going, and you find out what you would do to get around it. And I just told you how they're gonna get around it. So if you don't stop it with the permits, they're gonna go right around everything else.
James Dungin?
Hi, everybody. My name's James Dungin. I first moved to Memphis when I was four, and I grew up in this town. Lived here up till I graduated from Memphis High School, and then I moved away to further my career and build my- And then I moved away to, uh, further my career and build myself with full intentions of always moving back to this town. I moved to the city. I absolutely despise it. I've always wanted to move right back to where I grew up and to raise my kids where I grew up. Because I have great memories here of being able to walk down the streets. Maybe not every individual here, but people just like yourself when I was a child. That's what I want for my kids. I am currently looking at property, property to build a home here. Whether it be a hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred thousand for the property, another two hundred thousand to build my home. I'm looking to invest four hundred thousand dollars into this community because this is where I want to be. This is the experience that I want my children to have. With an outdoor marijuana grow, I don't foresee that even being capable. There's a lot of factors that so many people in this room have already brought up that I don't need to touch on again. I strongly urge this entire council to vote no on the outdoor marijuana. Sorry. Thank you.
Barb, Deborah, and Jeff.
I'll be very short here. The planning commission last week voted unanimously to deny this outdoor growing process. I would hope that the council would listen to the recommendation and, and please, please vote no on this. There has been, I can't agree more with everything that everybody has done. One of the things that still really bothers me is, and I've been on this planning commission for at least twenty, I don't know, the last thirty years that I've lived here. And I have never been to a meeting where something was proposed, where the person who was involved in the property is present or makes a request. I have never seen a request from anybody for this. Anybody that's not on the council, I've, I've never, there's no way. We don't know who this is, we don't know who they are, we don't know anything. And that really, really bothers me. It has bothered me since the beginning. And, you know, the other thing is, we have a marijuana dispensary coming into this town. We can't do anything about that. Hopefully, it will be a lovely thing and those people will be neat and tidy and keep the place fine. We have one square mile, and we already have one marijuana dispensary. How many more, how much more marijuana things do we need in this town? I say no.
Thank you. I think that wraps up our discussion. I want to thank everybody for, uh, keeping it brief and, uh, and orderly here. That's, uh, that's much appreciated. Um, so, moving on, folks. Does anybody want to make a motion here?
I have, uh, two motions I would like to make. And I'll make the first motion.
Stay loud.
Okay. I'll make a motion to not allow any commercial outdoor marijuana growing operation. That's my motion.
Well, that's already not allowed.
It's already not allowed. What's on the table here is not changing the ordinance to allow, uh, a change to the light industrial. It's not allowed right now, so technically, it doesn't even require a vote.
Yeah, your motion stands as, is, it is not allowed.
Okay. As long as it's not allowed.
So, well, so, the question being is that, you know, what was put out there for planning was to change the use in the light industrial and to allow an additional use for an outdoor grow. Okay? So, that's what came before planning. And planning made the recommendation to not change the zoning. That was a recommendation, so...
Well, that, that's, that's fine. I still love, I'd still like to make a motion not to allow it.
Alright. Okay, it's ready.
Robert, you did it. What are we voting to do?
Yeah, now, the body of deed happened.
To not allow an outdoor grow.
Well, the, the meeting was for planning commission to make a re- recommendation. That's why they had it. So, they made a recommendation. Their recommendation is that we do not allow, part one is that we do not allow outdoor growing. Okay? That we, well, actually, the recommendation is that we do not change the zoning to allow outdoor growing. Well, as it stands right now, it is not allowed. That's already done. That's, that is the way the law stands at right now.
As long as there's a clear understanding, I'll go along with it. As long as there's clear understanding, not allow any.
Right, as far as the, well, we can't do anything about personal people doing whatever they do or anything like that.
Well, that's different, personal marijuana.
Yeah, as it stands right now.
Any marijuana is allowed.
If we were to ask what you just made a motion for, we would be right back where we are right now. We're, there's no change at that. Right?
As long as there's a clear understanding, it's not allowed.
Yeah. Right, when you talk that, so...
So, as it stands right now, you don't need a motion, you don't need a vote. Because at the current, we do not allow for an outdoor grow. Excuse me? You basically take no action. So, no action on this. So, we are not gonna allow, we're not gonna change the use for
Outdoor grow.
In, in the light industrial to allow an outdoor grow. So, the way that it stands, the way our zoning is, it is not going to change. Does everybody understand that? It's not gonna change, period.
What about the condor?
That is next. That's another motion. Be patient, please.
I have a question. Your question says that it's not going to be allowed. Mr. Wilson's floor.
It already is not allowed. It is already not allowed in our zoning to have an outdoor grow. So, we need to know action on this. We are not gonna change the state of where our code stands.
But why wouldn't his?
Mr. Bob Marino, you have your time to speak, please.
That's kind of rude.
That's not very...
That's sarcastic. I want you to... I say don't speak.
Yeah.
Give me five minutes.
I don't need five minutes, I only need a short time. Basically, Mr. Wilson made a simple recommendation. What you do is you're parsing this down to this particular parcel, whether this parcel can be rezoned to allow an outdoor grow. I think what we're here for is to oppose an outdoor grow in the city. And that's what Mr. Wilson has...
It's already not allowed.
It's already not allowed. It is not allowed. The question was to add a use to a certain zone. Obviously, if nothing happens, it will be changed.
Then why can't we all go on record with that as well? That's fine, if that's the case, but let's be clear, we are opposed to it.
Here's, here's... Do you understand that? That's why we're taking, no, we're taking no action because we're not changing it.
Okay. Here's maybe a better way that it could be done. Make a motion to allow it so we can vote it down.
No.
We can vote it down.
No, no, no.
Mr. Mayor.
I care, I care, that's...
So, we can vote it down and then it'll be on record and vote it down.
Vote on the lattice, but not on the bar.
So, um, another motion, sir. Okay, thank you, Larry.
Uh, clear understanding is not allowed, not on the other part. Okay, I'll make a motion to not allow any commercial indoor marijuana growing operation by amendment to the current marijuana ordinance.
I have a comment on that. I, I worry just what everybody said here about litigation. Where right now, I would like more, I would like to hear from our lawyer how to do it right.
I, I, I did talk to the lawyer. I didn't...
That's all. Just, just so we don't end up in litigation, I'd rather it be done right.
I got a motion on the floor and I'd like support for it and hold on.
Support.
Wilson?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Martyr.
Yes.
Mazer?
No.
Riley?
Wait, wait. Wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, getting a little...
Brett, do you understand the question?
Do you understand the question?
I'm, I'm off cluster now.
Let me, let me, uh, read it again, okay? Make a motion to not allow any commercial indoor marijuana growing operation by amendment to the current marijuana ordinance.
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Soffa?
I abstain from that. I don't want to be in litigation, that's all.
I don't think we should abstain. We never could.
Everybody just told us how they're gonna run right over us, so we can.
The Nafta? The Nafta?
Sorry. I abstain from that.
No.
My understanding is, they were proposing a change to a ordinance, it wasn't a zoning issue.
No, no, no. That's right. They're trying to change the zoning to set their grow on a special, special use.
They already have an ordinance against this.
Yeah, we're not changing it.
That's what I'm saying, we're not supposed to try.
Hey, Donna, could you tell us how that vote total was?
Yeah, um, Wilson, Martyr, Mazer, Riley, Snyder, Stoops. Yes. Soffa abstained.
Okay. Thank you very much. Motion carried.
Do I have permission from council to approach the lawyer to make that change?
Well, we just said yes to that. We just said yes. Larry, we just said yes to that.
Well, I...
We did.
I think he's talking about the wording.
Okay, as long as I, I, I'll go ahead and do this.
I'll make a motion that we, uh, send to the lawyer.
Martyr?
Yes.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Soffa?
Yes.
Stoops?
Yes.
Wilson?
Yes.
Alright, uh, the mayor, um, it's been great to see so many people show up to these meetings, planning commission meeting and the city council meeting. I would love to see this many people here and involve in the future when we're just sitting down on the gate of bills. And I'd like to see more and more...
I'd like to see them really with a lot of petitions to run for these positions on the next election.
Exactly, you know? Petitions be open soon, just...
Sure.
Is there...
You correct, Scott?
I'm sorry, I just wonder, is there a way to, maybe next meeting or something, make a re- recommendation on how we're notified about discussions that are happening? Like, I cannot make every single city council, but like, if, if it's something that...
They're posting on their website, aren't they?
The meeting dates are. You can actually, on, ask for minutes or something, we start posting the minutes on the website.
First Tuesday of every month. First Tuesday of every month, we meet. Usually, you'll be at the city hall all day.
Yeah, I, I've tried in voice, like, I've tried to go by the voice somewhere for other reasons and then on Apple. So, and I know it said Facebook and Facebook, I just wonder if, like, if the website, if it always posts the meetings, if, if it's possible, like, to know when the agenda, have the agenda been posted?
The reader board on M.I.P.
Well, I just, I'm not sure.
Actually, the agendas are posted in front of city hall, right?
No. Oh, I mean, they were clearly out when they come in.
No, no, in front of city hall, the agendas are posted out in front. Are the polls aboard that?
Just the dates.
Oh.
That's the dates.
Okay.
We will try to do our best. Like, I remember only two people I was with a lot of times. But I will try to do my best to point out agendas on the website.
Even when I come in and get a...
Alright.
Sorry. Yep.
And again, thanks everybody for showing up. Thanks for the action. And then, um, looking forward to Memphis festival date is coming up. Um, Cami and everybody else jumped in on the, uh, the cleanup this last weekend in Rock and Town. You guys did a great job. Appreciate it very much. Other than that, I'm gonna turn it off here.
Yeah, so I do have, uh, one issue that we need to clean up. So, as part of the P.O.A. of police contract, uh, we were asked to consider giving our police officers a one thousand dollar hazard pay. So, I'm gonna make a motion that we give each of our police officers or score, uh, a one thousand dollar hazard pay which would come out of our COVID-19, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
This is, this is from the last batch of COVID money?
From the hundred and sixteen thousand dollars we got from the state, yeah.
Support.
Mazer?
Yes.
Riley?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Soffa?[1597.68]